How's the snow on yours?
Oh, goodness.
It's coming down.
It's been coming off and our dog's terrified of the sound and I had her out to go to the bathroom. I forget if it was yesterday and we were walking into our door and I heard, you know, the sound and we had to dive out of because the entire roof came down, right? And we both like powdered up and sprayed all over us, but we didn't get hit. And she was just looking at me like, this is why I'm here. This is exactly what is wrong with you, human?
Exactly.
What are we doing out here? Yeah. What about yours?
I was telling them that they're going to want on Sunday to put two big pieces of plywood on the windows in our den.
Yeah, because it's gonna like take out a, yeah, we have that potential too.
I'm sure.
And now everything's melting, so it started to go. If we don't create a channel for the water, it'll go right into the basement. There's a little coming in today. We've had the most lovely group of Norwich students coming to Jazz Club lately. It's really nice. The office where civic engagement has been really.
Oh, really?
Like responsive.
And they send them down.
Yeah, we had, we've had lots of different students come, but the last month we've had the same set come and that is fabulous.
Players or observers?
First time, yeah, and the kids are actually can beat them, some of them, not all of them. So they're like, their skills are improving by coming.
That's the email that I sent you.
Yeah. Am I handing these down? I have a copy already. Jeff, do you want that one? I have one.
What's this?
It's from Charlie.
Okay, so you want to know my pet peeves? There should be a hyphen there.
We're getting into punctuation.
There's one there, you just can't see it, invisible.
Is that the one where if I put milk on it or something?
You don't see it.
How's the snow at your house, Alfred?
Slowly going away. Is it going lawyers or streaking? Going away, great. It's melting right now. The snow finally set out my back of my house.
Yeah.
And I shovel out, shovel it because it's covered windows.
Yeah. Yeah, we had one path that we'd been snowballing and then the snow just came and it filled in the entire path and we're like, oh, that one's gone. Not giving up. Especially because it was the ice chunks, it wasn't just snow. Really heavy stuff.
My snowballing got no power, so I pulled the snow over the neighbor's.
Oh, and your friends still?
Oh, yes. Very much so.
No, and he's probably doing his neighbor's yard anyway.
Oh, yeah. I'm just teasing.
Which man, which neighbor? Which neighbor?
Beth Gray.
Beth, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, she, she ran into some heating problems here a little while ago. So that cost me almost a thousand dollars.
It's something else.
You can't let the person go cold, so you don't need the money and don't worry about it. I get a little static with my wife for doing stuff like that, but it's part of it. I've done it for 59 years and Jen phoned me up, yes.
So Jeff, are we doing this for?
Fifty-nine years, good on him. So do you have a doing the pledge?
So do the agenda and then?
That, yep.
Well, that's your?
Yep.
Fifteen, seven o'clock, all present will account for, would you join us in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. We're going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is for purposes of giving opportunities for people, organizations, or representatives thereof, an opportunity to speak to the different articles that are going to be voted on next Tuesday. So Article Seven. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $21,000 for FY26 towards the Northfield commuter, year-round commuter with service between Northfield and Montpelier? Is there anyone from GMTA to speak to that? Okay. My question is, what's the future of GMTA in Northfield?
Yeah, so we, yeah, yeah, so I've been asking those folks quite a bit about that and they have sent some literature, which is in the annual report, which kind of deals with it. As we all know, they're facing some serious financial issues and they have had to curtail some routes, but I've spoken to those folks two or three times and they say it's still at this point that they're committed to Northfield and they do not see the Northfield commuter route ending anytime soon.
So they will be servicing this community then?
That's, that's, again, I think the last three times I spoke with those folks, they reiterated that they have no plans at this time to curtail service to Northfield.
It's a good thing because we've got more residential properties coming in and one of them doesn't have a lot of parking. Yeah. Article Eight. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $14,800 for the Central Vermont Home Health and Hospice? Is there anyone from Central Vermont Home Health?
Hi, yeah, my name is Kelly Finnegan. Thank you for having us tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So this is a, this has been an ongoing request from us, from you, for us, for years. What I always like to hear is, how does it impact Northfield? What, what do you do for our community?
Well, so for, for Northfield in 2024, we had a total of 179 patients. Total visits, we had 3,343 for those patients. Total admissions, we had 219. Most of those are home health care, 2,369 of those were home health care. Then we have hospice, we had 644 visits for hospice. Long-term care, we had 244. Family-child health, we had 89 and we have the new palliative care that we've been doing since, it'll be a year in April and we had 17 new patients for that. So that's, that's a growing, it's something that we're, we're growing and 17 is a great number for, for Northfield to have. So we're, we're in the community. We're going to stay in the community. We're not going anywhere. Anybody that needs help, we're certainly there for them.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the board? Now, I can only speak to my neighbor who used the hospice and the palliative care and it was an absolutely flawless performance by you folks.
Great, we're happy to hear that.
Well, thank you for taking the time out tonight to make a presentation to the board. It's appreciated.
Well, we certainly appreciate your support and the town's support.
Thank you. Article Nine. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $2,800 for Good Samaritan Haven? Anybody here to talk about that? Washington. Article Ten. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $2,500 for Washington County Mental Health Services Incorporated? Anyone from Washington? Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $1,200 for the Central Vermont, Central Vermont Adult Education? Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $1,200 for Mosaic Vermont, formerly the Sexual Assault Crisis Team of Washington County? Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $1,000 for Capstone Community Action Incorporated?
Hi. I'm Yvonne Laurie. I'm the advancement and communications manager. So I recognize some of the faces this evening, but I didn't know if there was anybody fairly new. I thought maybe a couple folks perhaps, so I just wanted to give a little brief history to explain the services that we do. So we started in 1965. It came out of the War on Poverty under the Johnson administration in 1964. So Capstone Community Action is one of over a thousand nationwide and one of five in Vermont. Our core funding comes from the federal government and then gets filtered down to our five sister organizations and then that money is used to help Vermonters become more self-sufficient. So we serve residents in Lemoyle, Washington, Orange, and nine smaller communities that surround us. And our purpose is to improve the lives of Vermonters living in poverty by providing opportunities, education, and vital assistance. By breaking down the barriers that prevent people from thriving, we offer the hope people need, the dignity everyone deserves, and a better community for all. And we do this work in four different ways. We help folks make ends meet, so that is our food shelf, offering access to food in a variety of ways that we have in the past. Shelter, so we do work with like Good Sam, for example, on the ongoing housing crisis and heating assistance. We are building stronger families through our Head Start programs. We are creating warm and healthy homes through our weatherization and energy efficiency programs and opening doors through economic opportunities. So that's our savings and credit programs, our tax preparation programs, which are free to the community as well, our micro-business development and workforce development programs, as well as transportation. In the last year in our service area, we served 10,250 individuals in 6,531 households. And we are serving specific to Northfield, 265 adults and children and 133 households. So we are serving the residents of Northfield through every service we provide. And I believe that report has been presented, so I didn't know if you wanted me to read that, I'm happy to though if you do. But just as I explained, we offer a variety of services that Northfield residents are using. And we do not yet have our annual report for 2024, but I did want to pass on for folks to know that, you know, they can always go to our website or follow us on social media to learn about what's happening. Obviously, there's, you know, potential things in the, in the works, but we are continuing to do business as usual and we are still towards the end of our Feel Your Neighbors campaign, which is a 100-day-long campaign to raise funds for emergency food and fuel assistance. And this is in addition to what can be offered by the state. We also have two workshops that are starting tomorrow. So one is on financial education, so that's the savings and credit program and our micro-business development program. So that's free and open to the public and they're all virtual. And again, they start tomorrow and that can be found through our website. And yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. Slak, do you have any specific questions? Well, well done. So I was just handed a note that Monica White has just joined us. She's representing, I'm told, GMTA. Monica, would you like to give us an overview of what's happening?
Hi there. So thank you for the opportunity to, to come and speak with you. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, I just hopped off a, a meeting, another meeting, so dividing and conquering my time tonight. So Green Mountain Transit has very grateful to partner with the town of Northfield for provision of public transit services and very grateful for the town of Northfield's historical support for, for the work that we do. Really appreciate the partnership. So the mission of Green Mountain Transit is to promote and operate safe, convenient, accessible, innovative, and sustainable public transportation services that reduce congestion and pollution, encourage transit-oriented development, and enhance the quality of life for all. So with that overview, I will give a very specific overview for the, the town of Northfield. We operate the Northfield commuter route, which with daily weekday service between Northfield and Montpelier and the once-weekly Northfield Community Shuttle with service every Wednesday between Northfield and the Berlin Mall area. The 20, the fiscal year 24 ridership for those routes reflects that GMT transported 3,146 riders on the Northfield commuter and 474 riders on the Northfield Community Shuttle. In addition to those fixed route services, we provide transportation for Northfield residents to access medical appointments and personal needs trips, such as accessing food shelves for older and disabled residents to have social and personal visits and for Medicaid enrollees to, for non-emergency medical transportation, among other reasons. And so in state fiscal 24, GMT provided 929 special transportation service rides for Northfield residents. So in addition to, in addition to that, GMT provides connecting services to and from Northfield through general public transportation routes, including but not limited to the Montpelier Burlington link, the Montpelier Berry City commuter, Berry Hospital Hill, Waterbury commuter, US Two commuter, and Montpelier My Ride service. So that's very, very high-level overview of what we provided. Be happy to answer any questions that, that folks might have.
So I asked the manager at the beginning of our meeting tonight, what the status of your organization is going forward in Northfield because, you know, I saw an article that you're splitting some of the routes off to other operations and I was wondering if that was going to affect Northfield at all.
Sure, so with the passage of the Transportation Bill in last year's legislative session, GMT was required to study the potential of transferring rural service. And so Green Mountain Transit presently operates both urban and rural services. Under the GMT umbrella is serviced through Chittenden County and also Franklin Grand Isle Counties and Washington County. And so VTrans directed a, a deep dive study on the feasibility of transferring the rural service, so Franklin Grand Isle County and Washington County to other transit providers. We recently submitted, last month, to the legislature a report, kind of analyzing all sorts of, of pieces of that. And the legislature is, you know, presently contemplating whether they would authorize that in statute. The Board of Directors for GMT is sort of neutral on whether a transfer would happen and if it would happen for Washington County, it would be to Tri-Valley Transit, who presently operates service through Washington County, Orange County, and some of Northwest Windsor County, or some of Northern Windsor County area. And so if it were to happen, it would happen no sooner than July of 2026. And if it were hap, were to happen, the, no service changes for the town of Northfield would be included other than the, a different organization name on the side of the buses. So there would, there's presently no contemplation of service reductions that would impact the, the town of Northfield. And when there is more information coming out of the legislature and whether or not a transfer will happen, we will absolutely may, may make sure to communicate that with, with the municipalities that we serve.
Great, thank you. That's what my concern was. Any other questions for GMTA?
Just a comment, it sounds like the ridership is up, but it may have been numbers that I remember during COVID. It does sound, the numbers have increased considerably since back in the day.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, so I know, thanks for chatting. I know we've chatted a couple of times and the indication was at least for the next year or two that the current system for Northfield and the, would remain intact, is that?
Yes.
Yeah. Till 2026, you said. It couldn't change before then and it might not change then either.
Right, that, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was.
So for people voting this year.
It's next year, Potter.
Any other questions? Thank you, Monica.
Great, thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Article 14. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $1,000 for Circle? I see Circle on the screen.
Hello?
Circle, you're up?
Yes, hello, this is Denise Sanders and I'm here to speak to Circle and answer any questions that you might have. In the town report, there's a lot of data that's put out there. Do you want me to go through it, the summary that's been there or?
You can give us a brief overview of what Circle is and what you do for the community.
Okay, Circle was formally batted Women's Services and Shelter and started 35 years ago and we provide services to victims and survivors of domestic violence. And those services include advocacy in the court system, a shelter, a crisis line. We support the children, we also do some education in the schools, hopefully trying to help break the cycle before it starts. And we work with a lot of community providers to strengthen the services to support these families and the court systems and, and other advocacy groups. Most of the, the services are confidential and people aren't required to tell us where their, you know, their town of residence, but some have, that we, we do, we know that we service Northfield based on those individuals that did self-identify as Northfield residents. Now, the, the true numbers are probably higher. So, you know, we're looking for a thousand dollars, we appreciate all of the help you've given us in the past years and volunteers and Circle put in over 746 hours a month and so, you know, anything that we can get from volunteers and community donations greatly help us provide the services where they are needed.
Great, thank you for that overview. Any questions from the board? Great organization.
They're a lifeline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Article 15. Shall the voters, shall the voters authorize expenditure of $1,000 for the Vermont Center for Independent Living? Article 16. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $800 for Family Center of Washington County? Article 17. Shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $600 for their 40, elevate, elevate, I would assume, youth services, formerly Washington County Youth Service Bureau Boys and Girls Club? Article 18. Shall the voters authorize expenditure of $400 for Community Harvest of Central Vermont? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Peck. I am one of 68 Northfield residents that volunteer at Community Harvest.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight people. We have 360 total volunteers. The money that we have gotten through grants and towns and donations have recently improved our cold storage, so we have three walk-ins. We have distributed over 5,000 pounds of food to Northfield. It goes to the high school, to Sandra Drouin, who does a program up there. It goes to the Senior Center for Distribution and it goes to the food shelf. None of that is income-related at all. It's not mean-tested, it's just free food. And it's all gleaned and collected from various food producers that we, you know, go out and, and collect or glean and bring back to the warehouse that we have at Rogers Farm off of 12th. And we sort it, we clean it, we wash it, we weigh it, we bag it, we get it ready for distribution. And the way that it works is that the different folks, including Capstone, will ask for certain amounts of food, so we're not giving them food that they don't want. So for instance, the Senior Center today got carrots and potatoes and onions and there were some peppers there, I'm not sure we had them for them, but there were some canned foods as well because we partner with Willing Hands, which is down in Norwich. They collect from a lot of the different grocery stores and bring that to us so that we have that as well to distribute. We get meat from different spots, different places. We get cheese from Northfield, we get from Glenys Hill Farm, Lightfoot Farm, Fieldstone Farm, Judy Hewitt, and Union Brook Farm. So they all distribute, you know, give us donations from the end of farmers' markets or stuff that they have in excess or things that they just want to move on. So those are our local ones, but it's all over Washington County. So we serve Washington County.
Norwich is pretty impressive, this place.
Yeah, it's, it's really quite the operation.
It is.
Quite the operation.
And it's right local, I didn't know you were in Berlin.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it's, it's great. We have a, a whole warehouse building that's been built and three coolers in there and so we go in and it's not very well-heated, but, and we have yet to get a bathroom, other than that.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Did you know the woman who started that did that as a senior, as a project at CCV? That was how she got started doing that.
Alison.
Alison, yes. Lovely. She wasn't done. When the semester was done, she was like, "I'm not done. I gotta do more."
That's very cool.
Yeah.
Article 18, shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $400 for the Friends of the Winuski River? Article 20, shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $300 for Green Up Vermont? And Article 21, shall the voters authorize the expenditure of $250 for Our House of Central Vermont? All right. Any questions, comments? I will close this portion of the hearing.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.
It's always good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Any need to move the agenda or change the agenda?
No need. I would just note that there was a change over the weekend.
An addition to this agenda?
Yeah. We had just left off 151, the actual tax stabilization application.
Okay.
Yeah, you folks received that. It was properly won.
Any comments? Open participation scheduled? There is none? Approval of minutes? Move the minutes of 11 February?
Second.
Moved in second. Comments, questions? Charles?
I don't think I had any.
Who did that? Nothing jumped out at me.
Joe?
I don't have any. Thank you.
And Lydia?
I'm good.
And I thank Ken after reading these three times. He really keeps detail notes.
Yeah.
And I thank John for stepping in. I was preoccupied that day. Further discussion? Hearing that. All those in favor of approving the minutes of February 11, 2025, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain. 401.
Approval bills. Move approval of warrant 16-25 and 16-25 A through E for a total of $243,745.72.
Second. Moved in second. Comments, questions? Charlie?
I'm good.
Mary?
Nothing for me.
Joe?
I'm good also.
Me too.
Joe, are you all right tonight? I saw 2014 Western Star. I thought you shared your comments on that. All right. Further discussion? Hearing that. All those in favor of approving warrant 16 through 25 and 16 through 25 A through E in the amount of $243,745.72, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating 500. Payroll? Look for a motion for payroll.
All right. Well, I'll make the motion to receive the payroll. I can't put an amount on it, because what we were passed was $132,888.15. And the one in the warrant is $10,000 less.
That's my mistake. Must have read it wrong.
It's a typo. Which one do you want me to use? You want it on the spreadsheet?
I would say this one.
All right. $132,888.15.
Second. Any comments, questions regarding the receipt of payroll? Hearing that. All those in favor of approving said payroll in the amount of $132,888.15, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stating 500. Select Board Personnel Policies and Procedures. Mr. Manager, am I turning it to you?
Yes. Okay. Okay. So I spent quite a time working on the revised personnel policies. Some time ago, we did engage Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and they had some comments, and we tried to incorporate those, incorporate those. But in addition, I've been working with Attorney McLetty, whose firm specializes in municipal law. And as you can see, Mick had quite a few comments. But just overview, as you know, the policies that it's replacing with the ones in effect are quite old. So the first go-through, as you've seen, was really just in outdated things, Town Village, outdated statute-related items. And then we got into just some more items, again, related to more updated-type things and just making sure that it complies with the practices that the town has been following more recently. And also, we've kind of taken out some antiquated things, such as dress codes. Tried to scale back a little bit on the residency requirement and other things like that. Also tried to incorporate elements that related to a contract, such as the police contract and the other contracts. As you'll see, in most cases, when we talk about a specific item, such as vacation, we did refer to the contract or did state that unionized employees are covered by that contract. So those are the things. One of the major changes is in relationship to at-will employees. As you'll see, the current policy that's operating under has a procedure where if there is employee issues, discipline, that there's kind of a progressive-type procedure policy, where, you know, there's warnings and all these steps you have to go through in appeals process and things like that. And then there is a discipline chart. So again, there was quite a bit of discussion with the league and the attorney. So based on what the league is saying and what the attorney, we're kind of gravitating more away from that type of discipline, extensive discipline plot, discipline process, to more of a fortified or more at-will process. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of that. Hate to say it's a little bit of a work, still in progress. Lydia was kind enough to look through it further and had some comments about a concern about at-will versus still maintaining any kind of progressive steps or discipline. Again, McLetty had made some changes, which incorporated that got the town closer to looking or working towards at-will. But so that's, in terms of this, again, from my perspective, I think that's, you know, the biggest change in the item, I think, that warrants the most discussion by the board. It's kind of a big step, but again, what I'm seeing from a lot of municipalities, plus what the league's recommending and the attorney's, that, you know, municipality, again, started gravitating towards that type of position. Obviously, the municipalities need to be fair, or the town needs to be fair and reasonable. And I think the current manager and his current board, I feel confident in saying that, that we all would. But again, I keep wanting to be in a position where you're able to do the right thing in terms of employees, if they're not doing what they're supposed to or things like that. As we all know, particularly under union contracts and other state requirements, it's extremely difficult to terminate employees. Again, it's not something I think any of us take lightly or looking to do that quickly. But we want to make sure we have, the town needs to want to make sure they have that ability. It is a difficult one. So I know I threw a lot at you here, but it's kind of...
Well, before we have discussion, should we have a motion for discussion purposes?
Do you want to think of approving this just for discussion purposes?
This isn't ready to be approved. So, but for discussion purposes, it's fine. Yeah.
Yeah. So again, it's like, I don't want to slow it down, but as I said, it's still... I think we've come a long way, and I think both...
I think the proper way to discuss the document that's in front of us is to put it up, and then we can always table it.
All right. Make a motion to approve the personnel policy as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Comments? Charlie?
Thank you. First off, I totally approve this table being removed, Appendix A. I know who built that, and his background was military. And there wasn't much guidance back in the day on how to create that. So we did, it was done as best as it could be done, and I'm glad to see it gone. That said, that means the appendices change from A to B to B to C and all. So there's that knit comment that I have. So I think that changed.
Let's update the labeling of the appendices. So like...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Switching.
There's, obviously, we're going to be approving the, eliminating the line-outs and those things. But one question I had, let me see my notes, was... Wait. No, here we are. All right. So the appendix thing I have addressed. So we used to have a social media policy. And that was, as I recall, was an appendix. Are you, how are you going to address social media?
Yeah. So, yeah, that needs to be added to this.
It's here. It's just not, the text is missing. So I think...
Right, it just needs to be added.
We have it in our...
Well, I didn't know if he was going, if he was using Appendix, what's now C, Internet and Electronic Mail Policy, as a umbrella for social media. And if you are, I think you ought to label it such. If you're going to come up with a standalone social media policy, then it will be its own appendix.
Right. Because that's pretty... One adopted by the board.
We have one. I don't know if you've reviewed that yet, too, to whether it needs updates.
If it needs updates.
Yeah.
So is it the social media policy I'm looking at in the draft?
It's not in the draft. It's...
There is a policy that's been adopted.
In our binder.
Is that it?
It's missing from the draft.
The existing policy has a...
No, no, that's the incident reporting that you're pointing at.
Okay, social media.
That's where it needs, that's a placeholder.
Got it.
But we do have a policy.
I understand now. I see what you're saying. Yeah?
And it's just, it's not...
Got it. So the question is, do we just take the policy and insert that in? Or, that's what I was kind of meaning towards. So there's one other question, if you're comfortable taking that policy.
As long as we review it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Make sure it's up to A, that we're not behind the China bill.
Yeah, because that one's from...
I think that's pretty up to date.
That one was signed in 2015? I don't know how up to date it is.
This century, Lydia, give us a break.
That social media policy, 2015?
I don't think they're a different house.
That's why I'm taking a look. I don't know what else can be changed, but, I mean, the policy committee is no longer reviewing this, so we have to, as a board, review it.
Yeah, I mean, there has been support cases related to those policies. I'll have Mick take another one.
First Amendment stuff that...
But the plan will be, basically, get a look at it and kind of incorporate most of what's there into the personnel policy.
Yeah, it makes sense to have it in the...
Yeah.
As an appendix. That's all I got, I think. Let's see. Cell phone. Oh, yeah, that was the appendix delete one. Yeah.
I'm good. Barry?
I don't have anything at this time.
Joe?
Oh, I got here to read on page six, recruitment notices. There's no frequency on when the notices should be given.
Okay.
It says within three weeks. Doesn't say whether it's daily.
In the first paragraph.
Got it.
Monthly? What?
Okay. All right, good.
On page 13, I guess we've got the appearance list discontinued, right?
Correct.
Okay. On page 17, in 8.2.3, why not the same list as in the immediate family?
Where's the immediate family list?
In the policy.
Up above. Okay. They should be the same, or they not?
Thought we got them, but we'll double-check.
Yeah. They should match.
Why not?
And that's reflective of the new contracts, too.
Exactly. Hey, you folks made it clear you wanted them.
And on the 1, 2, 3, I guess it's 3, paragraph, we have on...
Which page?
Page 23. It says, "Select Board May Consider the Appeal Whether or Without a Hearing. The Town Manager Shall Notify in Writing. And then, within five business days, when a hearing will be held with the town." Now, we got rid of a bunch of those towns before.
Yeah.
This version.
Okay.
But where?
I guess with this.
Where the town. Where is it?
Yeah, it's probably submitted to the manager and then to the board. Okay.
And there's also a written decision of the town.
He's saying, be specific. The municipality of Northfield?
I don't care.
But be specific, the town of Northfield or the municipality of Northfield? Is that what you're getting at, Joe?
No.
Whether the board or the manager?
Whether or not the town is going to vote on it or comment on it or what?
Oh, no. Yeah.
Well, it says the town.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, we'll see.
It doesn't say whereabouts on the town.
Right.
Is it going to be on a common?
With stocks.
Yeah, it should be with the board.
In the policy, Charlie, it will be.
Yeah.
This is one of those things where the policy board, policy committee should have gone through this.
You, Charlie, you guys had the chance repeatedly to go through it.
Well, apparently, we're still finding stuff.
And did not. That's why we ended up back where we are.
Well, we're moving forward now. Moving forward.
We are. Let's keep moving forward, rather than...
Okay, on page 24, at the top of the page, there's more town.
Okay. Yeah, we'll change all those. Thank you.
Oh, I missed that one.
On page 25.
More town.
Yeah, or even at the beginning, or somewhere in the document, say, "The town of Northfield will hereby be referred to as the town..." "Or the town government of Northfield will be referred to," so that you don't have to write government of or...
The board.
...conversum. And then it's fine to say the town if you, at least in one place, indicate the meaning of it.
Okay, in 15.3, it says, "Police Department Officers Who Work 24 or More Hours Per Week Must Elect Group D or Group DC of the Defying Contribution Plan." What about the admin assistant or the receptionist or whoever that is? Dispatcher.
Yeah. So that person, I guess we can clarify, but that position does not qualify for that program. That person or that position qualifies for the retirement that all other employees get.
Okay. I just...
Yeah.
So it's correct that it's Police Department Officers. It's specific to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
On page 26, 15.10, the life insurance sentence is doubled.
Yeah.
I just stopped there, thank you.
On page twenty-nine. The select board examined personnel records, article eighteen.
The personnel policies for the employees, so I don't know if that's where, you just want to know.
Yes. What's the question?
Personnel records related to the select board.
If.
If the select board has the authority to look at personnel records. And if they do or do not, should it be spelled out in policy?
Yeah, it's a good question, I mean, we've gotten a couple of legal opinions that, um, that they should not see, obviously the managers, but not, um, not the others.
So how does the select board audit the managers keeping of the personnel records?
So, what?
How does, how does the select board know if the manager is keeping personnel records correctly, how does anybody check?
A simple question would be, the personnel policy acknowledged on the back page. If we decide we want to see if everyone's acknowledged it, it's a reasonable request.
Yeah, so what we could do.
It's just a way of evaluation, the performance of the manager. So I think there should be a mechanism in place that if the board, the complete board, assigns someone's to make sure that the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed, as far as the personnel records, they can assign one. Assign someone to do so.
Just trying to think the best way to do that, um, I would get an opinion from the attorney, whether it's.
Yeah, whether we ask the attorney to do that.
Should be able to direct one of its own to evaluate personnel records, to make sure that they are complete.
Yeah, but not, I guess, look at.
Look through them.
Yeah, letters or things like that.
How do we evaluate if we, if a letter of correction or warning was issued to an employee, how do we know that occurred? Jeff, did you do that? Yes, you're going to answer the question, but to verify that, to audit that, who audits the managers' personnel records?
Alright, well, we'll get a procedure from the attorney.
Yeah, same, the Jeff.
Get an opinion.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, John. What do you?
Yeah, I sent Jeff my comments, but I'll go over them here so that everybody else has them and has an opportunity to disagree. Most of mine are not, they're type of, type things.
Yeah.
And a couple of questions. On page seven, two point seven, I just had the question of whether we give background checks to everyone, um, or not. And just wanted to make sure that we have a consistent application in our behaviors, so we're not. Sometimes background checks, if it's not, that it should be.
Okay.
And we have maybe, I think we used to say, will be, I just want to know what are, you know, what do we do? Do we do it all the time? If so, just.
Because right now it says maybe something to a background.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at this point, we've been doing it with. All of the highway department and anybody with a CDL or drives vehicles plus department heads. I'm trying to think the last hire in the office.
Certain people that are working with children.
Everybody handling money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, the last few hires have all been either highway department or utilities and so we ran, did background checks on those and extensive for department heads, department heads, it's been both.
You have seasonal people working with vulnerable folks. And they should have a background investigation, a background check.
Some of them, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we're consistent in our application of.
So do you want to say shall?
Or, I, I want us to make it clear so that it's not just like, oh, somebody today feels like giving a background check. Like, it should be distinguished for which positions, if it's specific positions, if it's everyone, it should be everyone. If it's not everyone, we should be very careful that we've, that we're applying it consistently.
I think it'd be fine to say for all employees, I.
I mean, I don't object to.
People that are going to people's houses, as me to reader.
Yeah.
Or water sewer guys, they're going to people's houses and they may be going inside. So you don't want a outlaw in that position, fortunately, we don't have any.
Okay, so I.
I would say everyone.
Yeah. Alright, page seventeen, there was just a comment about, from Mick it looks like, about rate of accrual. And I just didn't know if that was resolved, is it the annual carryover or what is the cumulative to a maximum of forty-five? Is it a, a carryover of forty-five, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so you'll just maybe add a little language so that it's clarified. Okay. Page seventeen, there was also, as John was noting, under item five, use of sick leave, there's just one spot that didn't match the other two lists of immediate family, it should just say sibling, that's a small one. Uh, page eighteen, eight point three, I know because our town has fewer than fifty employees, we use.
Full-time.
Fewer than fifty full-time employees, we use VIPLA rather than FMLA.
Yeah.
Um, and so then there was a reference to FMLA in the second paragraph, and I wasn't sure if that was intended to be there or is it an accidental?
Good one.
Okay. Twenty-five, really small here, it's similar to Charlie or John, whoever pointed out. We deleted item fifteen point four, so we just need to have it fifteen point three and then fifteen point four, continue down.
Oh, yeah.
That's small, twenty-six was the one John already pointed out, there was a repetition of life insurance. Twenty-seven, page, article seventeen point two, safety committee, does the town have a safety committee?
Not currently, we, I think years ago, but.
My request is just either we have a safety committee and we leave it in, or we take it out if we're not going to have a safety committee. I don't have an opinion necessarily, but whatever, I'm sure that this kind of thing affects our insurance and whether we're seen as, I don't know, it could, whether we're, our safety. So, just make it, I just want a recommendation from that.
Subcommittee?
I think it's a, an employee, an employee committee.
Got it.
Yeah.
We have it.
And, page forty, uses the word company a lot, this is similar to that question of the town. I was, I don't know whether it should say town supplied, that's sort of nitpicky, but we haven't used the word company elsewhere, so. Um, forty-one, I just noted that the social media policy was missing. And also on forty-one, it mentions a designated medical provider in the second paragraph of appendix G.
Yeah, we don't know about that.
Okay, so there's just maybe a little cleaning up in there, because it refers to that a couple of times, so they can go to whatever medical provider.
Correct.
Yeah, great. Um, I'm really thrilled with where we're at with this, I think it's getting really close and I hope maybe in another couple of weeks, we'll be ready. The at-will versus cause, I also am really glad to see that chart going away. This is not a recommended thing anymore from the LCT. You can choose if you want to be at-will or cause, for cause, and there are reasons we might want to consider either one. But regardless, getting rid of that chart, because basically if you deviate from it at all or if there's anything that's not on there, you open yourself up to potential cases where somebody says it wasn't there, so you can't do this, or.
No, undo the process.
Yeah, so I don't know, I feel like there's still something to consider, but I'm happy with the direction that we're headed in.
I thank everyone for their diligence. Let's see it in two weeks, Jeff.
Yeah.
You think you can turn it around?
Absolutely.
You heard that.
So there was a motion for disclaiming the motion.
So.
Yeah, the motion.
We'll go to the maker of the motion, is it alright to be tabled?
You gotta ask me, you're the chairman. Tabled, we may have new members on the select board.
Exactly.
You never know, who's up for election?
Alright, the motion has been tabled. Tax stabilization policy and application form, who's taking this?
So just kind of read and then let the committees, so as I noted in my report, just on the minutes, the economic development subcommittee, myself and Tom Davis met last week. Good meeting, discussion about, um, the policy and the application. As you hear, it was kind of a struggle, we're still working on the best way to get at that issue of when somebody is eligible for tax stabilization or when somebody may have lost that ability and currently it says that they can't apply or get tax stabilization if they start a project, so the committee was really, we had a good meeting, but we were really kind of struggling best on how to tackle that issue, that was kind of the primary issue, so I'll turn it over to.
Make a motion to approve the tax stabilization policy. Second.
Second, although, do we have a, we, we don't have a new draft in front of us, so I don't know what we would.
Well, I was just gonna read what I sent you on email, which is.
Okay.
That's the move is seconded. So, uh, further discussion?
Yeah, the tax stabilization policy is what the economic development committee identifies as a flaw. The flaw being the requirement to submit an application for tax stabilization before construction begins. There is no definition what that means and the interpretation can be as conservative to the point that doing a PERC test could be considered construction or removing non-compactable contaminated material, ledge or that's unsuitable for construction. The scenarios are endless. Creating an investment-friendly environment will get the word out that Northfield is open for investment, takes the sting out of investing in the largest gated community in the nation, which is Vermont. The town benefits simply by adding property to tax rolls and utility revenue that previously did not say nothing, did not exist, say nothing of the externalities of occupancy. On the policy, page three and five of the policy reads, the town manager shall prepare and present to the legislative body for approval a policy that includes the following. An applicant process that includes, that doesn't, that language doesn't need to be there, because he's already done that. So we're working with a policy, so we can pull that out. The language could be changed or should be changed to the town of Northfield, through the management shall create the process that includes, and it's just replacing one line with another and then it just is an easy flow the way the policy goes. Additionally, page three and five read, restriction of the application to projects that not have begun construction, with the exception of any projects that under that, which may inspire the vote approval of, okay, da, 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 it just continues on. Absent a definition of construction that identifies an unsuitable site, brownfields, asbestos, or a litany of other reasons that may be considered as construction when it's only exploratory. The language should reflect reality to read, restriction of the applications to three, restriction of the application to three months, once all permits have been obtained and a certificate of occupancy has been received by the applicant. Now, we weren't at the committee meeting, we did not agree to that. It was just language that I thought that would, would fit, given the reality of you don't know what's going to happen during a construction season. But in the process of following up with that after the committee meeting, went down to the zoning administrator. And local permit, just to reiterate or refresh everybody's mind, a local building permit notifies the tax assessor of new construction, putting the permitted property on the grand list as of the first of April. If construction is incomplete, a tax assessment is based on a percent of completion. So now, we have an existing property that's being repurposed and it's under construction. And the, so it's already got a value for taxes. Now, it doesn't get completed before it's put on the grand list. So we're going to be doing a, a tax stabilization based on an old value. So if you wait until the project is complete, the assessors will have already assessed the property for a value that they determine is reasonable. And then, it's that time that the tax stabilization would come to us for future use. That's for the future, tonight we have to act on one that is going through the policy. So I think, changing the language, so it reflects what occurs. Because right now, the committee talked about a property that they, was a brownfield. Does that justify, uh, construction? It's not defined. So do they have to have this application in before they even know if they can build on it because of compactable fill? I know areas in town where they're going to discover, um, old tin buildings that they wouldn't know existed, that are buried. So I think, to make it a little bit more user-friendly and less confusing for the people who are going to do the assessment, to do it at the, within, to, uh, say, within three months of the certificate of occupancy, you can apply for a tax stabilization.
Charlie, can I have a turn before we?
Absolutely.
Charlie and I do not agree, so. My understanding of tax stabilization is that it is an incentive for people to do construction that they may otherwise not do, which is why almost every policy that I can find has the language that the application must be received, and most of them say, and approved, prior to construction. Because it is the time which the town gets to negotiate or talk with and decide about whether they want to enter and have some like leeway of talking to them about their project and encouraging them in a certain direction. If they've already been building, well, one, they've already determined that whether or not they have tax stabilization, it's worth going ahead. They're already, they've already decided that their project is profitable enough to do. So the town of, the city of Berry has, application must be received and approved before construction can commence. The town of Montpelier has the same language and says that it must be made after approval of the zoning permit, but before the DRB issues a building permit. And they are at risk of being refused tax stabilization if they've started their project before then. Town of Highgate has the same language, town of Brandon has the same language. If there is somebody in economic development who's a professional who can explain to us why, I do not think that we should depart from what is the norm. Now, I think there's this separate piece that is the exception, which is that we haven't had a clear process and this policy is old, and there's a couple of projects right now that I do feel like we could maybe make some exceptions to because they asked about tax stabilization and we didn't have an application. So a project that just barely started, I'm open to making an exception to, but, but in general, I think our policy should remain the way that it is. And that's where Charlie and I.
She's right, we disagree.
So, my question to you, Charlie, is why after the fact, are you worried about the valuation of the property?
Well, I'm not worried about the, I'm not worried about anything, but I think just is, is a cleaner method to have the assessors assess the value, so you know how much your stabilization is going to be. And you, that. And you, that allows the builder to avoid a potential delay in construction for whatever reason. You can't get electrical, you can't get plumbing, you can't, whatever. So if you've got a project going on and you get stopped because there's another pandemic, you wait until the project is done. There's so many reasons why, in Vermont, why a project wouldn't be complete. And what does, I mean, the permitting process is one thing. But once the project is complete, they're gonna want to complete their project for the tax, to apply for the tax stabilization.
Well, here's my thought on that. Any developer who's worth a grain of salt is already gonna have pro forma's of what the building's value is gonna be assessed at and what the income-producing capability of.
Right.
Whatever. So that information is readily available already. What is not is the final lister's listing.
Right.
But you have a pretty good idea of what the impact of your stabilization is gonna be at the beginning of the project. We know what the value of, the applicant has made such, the current applicant has made such estimates. I don't see it, Charlie. Sorry.
I made my case.
I, I don't personally see it, I would, I think this has to be at the beginning of the process, not at the end of the process. Yep?
I, I think it would be helpful to maybe add a definition of what construction is. Now.
Yeah, well, that's a separate issue, really. So, he's saying that's one of the problems. We have no definition of what construction is.
But I, I think, well.
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay, I guess I was, I was getting ahead of myself.
But he was saying, grant the application of this tax stabilization after the project is completed. Occupancy permit.
After the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, that's where I'm.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, and me too.
But, he brings a good point of what's the definition of construction? Absolutely. So that is a worthy, further look and updating the policy.
And there was also a discussion about how our current one says restriction of application to projects that have not begun, and we aren't clear about whether you can submit your application and then begin while you're waiting for your application? Because some of the other policies specify that it must be received and approved prior to, so that's something for us to consider if we want to be more clear, or if we don't.
Well, do it, do it now, absolutely. Make it clear.
So, language says something like, let's see. Well, we don't, what is, what are all these other policies today?
I haven't found one that has a definition of construction, but some of them are just more clear in terms of, I think if you see, application must be received and proved before construction can commence on the property, that that's, makes it sound like almost anything.
So that's a conditional permit?
Montpelier's was between the receipt of the zoning permits, but before the issuance of a building permit, so that one was.
That's even more specific.
So Montpelier's.
But they have a little different process than we do.
So I think Montpelier's at least allows for some exploratory efforts. You know what I mean, you know, doing brownfields and maybe you can test pits.
That's reasonable, I mean.
Yeah.
Why would a developer develop a piece of property without knowing that there's a brownfield problem worth seven hundred thousand dollars?
I agree, and I think it should be set up that way, at least let folks do the necessary exploratory, so I would agree with what you're saying there.
Yeah, well, I used exploratory in my argument, so I think the language could be, construction is after exploratory, after exploratory, what's the word? Exploratory investigation.
Site analysis, something like that.
Exploratory analysis.
Site analysis and.
It sounds like there's some consensus, I haven't heard from Mary and John, about adding a definition of what construction is. Is that, is it okay for Jeff, and he can take Charlie's suggestions and maybe?
We're having a discussion, so getting the language.
You wanna try to get the language figured out?
Yeah, so he can put it in the policy and we can approve the policy, this, whatever the board.
I have other edits to the policy too, so I don't know that we're, I don't know how we wanna work through that type of stuff.
So we're identifying flaws in the current policy. So this could be an ongoing lengthy discussion. Were we looking to approve the policy today?
The policy's already approved, I mean, we have.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Being amended.
We already have the policy in place. All we're talking about is amending the policy. And how does that go, through a board vote?
Yeah, and again, I don't, as it relates to applications, I don't see that there has to be an urgency to do the amendment this evening. I think though, we need to keep it moving in the next couple of weeks.
Why don't we do what we just did for the personnel policy, write down suggestions, just like Charlie did in this write-up, and maybe what Lydia is going to discuss, and have it back to us within a couple of weeks.
And route it through the, the policy committee.
Yep, the policy committee.
What will the policy committee do?
Well, that's what policy committees do, we make recommendations, just like the economic development policy, we make the recommendations on policy.
But, so when you say route it through though, does that mean you're gonna have another meeting prior to it coming back to the board? That's what I'm trying to understand, because I don't, I think we should all be able to submit opinions and changes to this, not just the.
The policy, the policy committee doesn't prevent input.
Okay, so what does, what do you wanna be able to do? You wanna have a meeting to discuss it, you and John, or can't we all just send John?
Or you can not have, don't, don't route it through the policy committee, don't have a policy committee. If, if you wanna expand to the point where the board wants to talk to it as a whole, that's good too. We didn't have a board that was able to have a open discussion that was reasonably researched and thought, so we do now.
I'm fine, I mean, if the policy committee wanted to meet and pull out old policies, review them, examine other policies from other towns, make some suggestions, bring them to the board, then we all talk about it.
Right.
Then we all give Jeff recommendations, then it comes back to us, I'm fine with that. But this one's already pretty far along, so, I mean, if you do.
It's already, it's already approved policy.
Yeah.
And we, well, we've been changing the personnel policy, we went through that, we made, we got hung up because of, I don't think John, John inputted to Jeff, and I don't think you shared that with me, whether it was intentional, it didn't make any difference. So when it came back, I was like, wait a minute, there's a lot of changes that need to happen here. And we did, we did those. So if you, if the policy, this board, I think, is capable of taking a draft that Jeff creates with input from the board.
Yes.
That, I don't even think we need it.
I think that's, I think that's how we need to proceed, so please provide, you could provide it tonight, or in writing to Jeff.
Yeah, well, I'll say my things out, because I think like the one Charlie brings up, we all need to have the opportunity to debate anything that's like substantive change. Like, if we're changing when the application's gonna be received, everybody needs to comment on that. A couple of my things, I think, are more editorial and I don't think will be an issue, but I would love the opportunity to just share them with you all so that it's out in the public.
Let's go, you track the changes, Jeff.
Yeah.
You, you take your document, you track changes.
We've been doing that.
You can put Lydia in the color that she would prefer, I would like to have red. I would like to show mine in blood-colored red, but, and then you give it to the board. And the board can say, nah, you know, whatever, and we can make arguments about, we can make our positions known. And God help us when we start changing things, because the wordsmith over here is gonna be looking for that semicolon.
No, I, it's the hyphen, I'm always looking for it.
It's the hyphen, so Lydia, the floor is yours.
All right, a couple of these things I brought up in our Economic Development Subcommittee, and then a couple more I discovered as I was researching other policies. So, I think that we are missing, simple things, some headers, which I've mentioned to Charlie and Jeff already, that, that show that this is the section for commercial development, and then there's a section for housing, residential. Also, most of the other policies have a statement of purpose, which might help remind us, why do we have a tax stabilization policy, what are we trying to do? It can be a very simple thing, so I would suggest that we add a short purpose statement. And also, I think we should include in here the date of voter approval, because this policy was actually passed before the voter approval was given to the select board, and it was voted down a number of times, and I actually think Mick might even not have it right. It looks like it might have been 2017, so somebody should double check what year was actually passed, because it needed a two-thirds.
Right.
Vote. So I think it should just say in here that the authority was granted to the select board on whatever the actual date was, so that's in the policy. We need to mention, I think, that it's only applicable to the municipal tax portion and not the state education portion. And we could decide if we wanted, some of, some of them tell you how to go about getting tax stabilization with the state for the other portion, if you want. And then, I think that it's already in statute clear that tax stabilization is at the complete and sole discretion of the select board. There's no, just because you meet the criteria does not mean you get tax stabilization. So I think there should just be a little more language that very clearly states that like sole discretion. There's no, because you did it once, you have to do it again, there's no precedent created. So some language around that, I think, should be added. And then I also think it would be clear to say, received and approved prior to construction, so adding approved. The application needs to be received and approved prior to construction, whatever the definition of construction is. But that one's more, that one we might wanna debate about, so.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about potential bunch of money here. And it'll have to be made up by other taxpayers, so we can't be just.
Sort of, I said that too.
Not really.
It's the increase, so it's like revenue that we didn't have before, and it's definitely only favorable to the town to enter into tax stabilization when it's gonna be a net gain over time.
Over time.
Yeah, and even initially, because it's tax stabilization, stabilization on the improved amounts.
Yeah.
But yes, it is potentially, we're giving them a break, a tax break.
Well, and I, I wanna repeat what you said, and was mentioned back on February 11th, which is by some member of the audience, as well as myself, which is that they already determined that this is a profit-making adventure, profit-making venture. So, they weren't counting on tax stabilization when they started, so. I think approved is not asking too much of a developer, but.
Yeah.
Well, as I think we all realize, the town benefits, if something new comes into town.
Yeah, exactly.
When they have a, we have a friendly environment that says, if you come to us and you're gonna make the town better, we'd, we'd like to take the sting out of going through all the permit process. I mean, it's expensive to do anything, you can't, I think it's gonna have to get an Act 250 the way things have been going for me to put up a fence for my pigs. It's, it's crazy. So that's why I said this is the largest gated community in the nation, to take the sting out of that, and have something that didn't exist before, and now someone's made that investment, hey, welcome to Northfield, we hope you succeed, and we weren't getting this tax before, so we're gonna get more taxes.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, and, and that's true, I misspoke.
What else, Lydia?
Those were mine.
Okay. So any other comments related to proposed changes to the policy amendments? So now we're gonna table it, we're gonna see it in two weeks?
Yes, absolutely.
We have an application.
Make a motion to approve the application for tax stabilization from, I guess it would be Vermont Rental Solutions.
Four one fifty one South Main Street.
Four one, the address being one fifty one, not four one fifty one, one fifty one South Main Street. I do it.
Second. If I could just.
Yep.
Do you need to state the number of years?
I don't know, do you need to state the number of years in the motion?
In fact, I do, and that was going to be part of the discussion, which, because I understand now, if I read my emails correctly, we left the Economic Development Committee with the intention of recommending a three-year tax stabilization, and now with the myriad of communications that we arrived on our desk, it appears to me that they qualify for a five-year.
Our motion was to recommend a three-year tax stabilization unless we receive further information regarding one-third of the units being affordable housing or low-income housing, and more information about their energy efficiency.
Right.
And then we did receive more information, which was shared with everybody. So, they do then meet the criteria that we have in our policy for a five-year. So Charlie, do you wanna make your motion for three or five?
Five years, just wanna make sure we all saw the same data, because the committee left as I told you. So there we go.
It's removed and seconded?
Yes.
Further discussion?
I just wanna make sure everybody reviews the five-year criteria, so that the project has a minimum of three units, this project has fifteen. It's on the policy on page five. Has one-third of the units reserved for low-income or senior housing. So we've received information that says all of the units are considered affordable based on, what entity are we gonna cite? The, the research that Tom Davis did for the board.
Find my HUD.
Yep.
HUD.
Using median incomes for Washington County and then taking a percentage, so it meets that standard. We already discussed in the Economic Development Committee that it seems like it was in line with the town plan. This is a development that's on water sewer, it's walkable to the downtown, it's a building that hasn't been utilized recently, and they're maintaining the historic facade of the building. What else did we talk about, Charlie, in terms of how it met the criteria? And, I mean, obviously, much-needed housing that our community.
The only, the only drag that I, and I'm not going to say this is against the policy, but the parking thing. It's, that's a big dealio. So, we don't have a solution for that, other than go find some parking where. So with a winter like this, it's gonna be, it's gonna require them to do the heel-and-toe express to a municipal parking lot. And that is just, it's a shame that we can't come up with it, but if it succeeds, there may be something in the future that is developed. Right now, parking is the only thing that I can see is going to be complex, and it might not have the value for the developers. That's not my concern, but, you know, I'm not gonna.
And that's DRB.
That's right.
DRB's responsible.
And they, they said go forth. So, that's, that's just kinda, that's more of an editorial than it is anything else, but that's just.
So we have a motion, it's for five-year tax stabilization. Lydia threw, added the criteria.
So we have a motion. It's for five-year tax stabilization. Lydia threw, added the criteria, but it's met.
I also want to say that we're considering this project that in some ways I think has started. It's not ideal. It's partially because this policy has been sleeping and we didn't have an application ready to go. And I believe this person asked about tax stabilization and that's part of why we are digging out our policy. So it is a bit of an exception from our policy.
Yeah. So I think I'll reword my motion just for the point of clarity if y'all bear with me. Make a motion to approve the 151 tax stabilization policy, tax stabilization application and waive our existing tax stabilization policy for that purpose. So we have, we do, if we verbatim comply with our policy, I think we need to have the language in there that says we are waiving this part. Because this is. I agree with that. Yeah. But it needs to be addressed in the policy, which we will do going forward. Well, you can waive policy anyway. You just have to, you have to have the policy. You have to have it discussed in open session. But it would be, you know, a waiver could occur, extenuating circumstances, language. But it's, the fact that you're having the discussion in open meeting, you can waive it.
And the board has really broad authority, if I understand correctly, with how we implement tax stabilization. But I just want to make that perfectly clear because I wouldn't typically prefer to be discussing it at this point in the project. But we're here because, you know, this is just what happens sometimes, that policies become outdated and it hadn't been used in a long time. And so it wasn't on any of our radar and.
And this is going to be around until the voters take it away from us. So the eliminating any, you didn't do that for me, you know, it just is a good way to, it's just gonna be a clean thing. Mary, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question about Mick Letty says that it isn't required to have a form, he said.
No, it's not.
So the argument that we should give them consideration because they asked for a form and we didn't have one is doesn't make any.
They didn't ask for the form. They asked for tax stabilization.
Right.
And we didn't, and we told them they needed to fill out a form, which we then created. So I think that there's like a certain grace period because we didn't have it. And our policy said we would have an application. So even though we're allowed, like again, we have broad authority to give out tax stabilization.
So do we have proof that they asked, do we have documentation that they asked for it? We have documentation?
According to Tom.
Then I think we have to give them. We have to consider their.
We don't have to give them.
We don't have to give it. No, we have to consider.
It's a fair, it's a fair consideration.
Yeah, I think we have to consider it. And I think, I want to say one other thing. Looking at these drawings, I'm looking at the drawings here. This looks like worker housing. One bedroom.
Yeah. They're calling it workforce housing.
Yeah, workforce housing. Yeah, that's what it looks like. Hopefully, it must stop there.
I think they're.
The GMT will stop.
Yeah, there's a sign that's right by Main Street. Yeah.
GMT stops anywhere you want. I broke my arm and GMT stopped in front of my house.
Yeah, somewhere there.
Well, it might be a good place for the kiosk that is homeless right now.
No, a kiosk is.
Let's concentrate on our application, Mr. Morrison. Further discussion? You have a motion on the table that's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, sustaining 5-0-0.
Thanks, everybody. I know we've spent a lot of time on this.
But these are important things.
Appreciate.
How many tax stabilizations have been issued in Northfield since 2000? Zero.
I think the answer is zero unless.
So this is like our, we're gonna knock it down. We're gonna drag it out. We're gonna beat it up. We're gonna make it look good. And then we'll have a policy that other boards can work with. That will be possible for the community. Tom, your address report.
All right, real quick. So as I noted in my report, the annual report has arrived last week and it's in the office. Copies are around town. It's on the website. We've got a lot of good compliments about the cover and the whole document. So thanks to everybody. Thanks, Ken.
Yep, good job.
Main Street Waterline Tank Replacement Project, as I said, that project's set to start, started in April. So next, early March, we'll go ahead and do a very extensive public outreach, letters to everybody that's potentially affected. Lots of posts on Frontport Forum, Facebook, we'll get the word out.
With a projected schedule, with a projected calendar.
Yep, great idea. Cross Brothers Dam project, when the consultant was here, they talked about having a public planner meeting to allow folks, a specific company, who did the plants, taught the engineers. That they've decided it'd be a good measure, brewery on March 5th from quarter of 8:00 p.m. Utility budgets, we're starting work on those. It's kind of a little bit early to give any prediction of how things are going. I do see some real positives and I'm very grateful that water usage is back up to where it was a couple of years ago. As we talked about, water usage was way down. Their uses are up. Everybody's back to where we thought it would be. So that's good news. One thing I'm a little concerned about is that the passants rely on surplus funds. And but again, we're spending time working on those and I hope to have budgets to the Utility Commission in April. 310 Water Street, as you recall, that process, project's going through FEMA buyout. After many years, FEMA's finally pulled it together and it looks like there's gonna be a closing on that property at the end of this week. Once the property closes, then it becomes owned by the town of Northfield. Next step after that will be for the municipality to go out to bid, to get a contractor to remove the building, remove the building. And then the site will be reworked and ceded, basically just the vacant land similar to the other buyout properties. Lastly, I know we've been talking about the installation of smart meters and this has been a problem for quite some time. Yeah, it looks like we're getting much closer to that. Within the next few weeks, the first step will occur. And it'll be the installation of four receivers throughout the municipality and those will be placed on existing poles. Not large, overly obtrusive objects, but those will be, excuse me, installed again probably in a month. And then it looks like, hopefully, hopefully in, maybe in October, we actually will be able to start installing some meters. But again, after a long process, it's coming together. And as I like to say, fortunately, it's not costing repairs directly. Again, funds are coming through grants and also through the capital budget over the last few years. I think that's, I'm sure I forgot something, but.
Okay, next item on the agenda, board members' comments, concerns, questions, Charlie? Oh, of course, I gotta say something. So first off, the frosties are out there. The big ruts are getting huge. The roads are gonna thaw and then they're gonna freeze. So for the traveling public, I encourage you to drive defensively, avoid the holes. The guys are gonna get to them as quick as they can. We've had another unplanned loss for the highway department. So we're getting shorter and shorter on staffs. But they're going to, they'll manage it. They'll get there. And I left my notes. That was one thing. Oh, about, yeah, so Frosties abound Monday at 6:30 for town meeting. Northfield Farmer's Market will have snackables. And I understand there may be youth to, available to do, to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. And on voting, town meeting day goes from 7:00 to 7:00. And vote early, vote often. Barry?
I was in California and so I didn't have a lot and I missed the big snow dump, which was very nice. But I do want to say that it appears there's an issue on Central Street. And I brought it up last year. It's the same bleeping issue. And what are we gonna do about it?
What issue, Mary?
Oh, it's water that won't drain properly and.
Is that near Washington Street?
I think so. I think so.
Yeah, so we've done, we did some improvements near Washington. But what the issue is, there's a couple, unfortunately, there's a couple of sidewalk driveway aprons where we've got some puddling. And I had the paving folks look at that. So I think we'll be able to come up with a solution. And part of the other problem is the driveways are a bit elevated. And so it's a combination of water coming off the sidewalk, water coming off the drive-in on the, from the road. So I'm gonna try to put in some kind of, some pieces of asphalt or curbing to try to redirect it. It's, you know, it's frustrating because, you know, on every street, particularly with the slope, you're gonna have a little bit of ponding. But you're right, there are a couple that it seems a little bit more than you typically would expect. So again, I've been talking to Carl. We're thinking about maybe putting in an extra piece of curb or maybe trying to trim the asphalt. I'm always nervous about trimming asphalt, but I'm well aware of it. We've been looking at it.
Is this the issue you're talking about, Mary? Because is this Washington Street?
It's on Central Street.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I definitely, I mean, when we put in a nice sidewalk and then you can't use it because you have to go around because those puddles, I mean, I've walked those a lot and you can't.
I agree.
You have to go out in the road. They're not like, you can't go around them either. Like there's not, because of the snowbanks and stuff. So then you just have to get out. So yeah, I know it's hard, but I.
Yeah, fortunately, it's occurring with snow melt and we didn't see an excessive problem during the summer.
No, it's only in the wintertime.
Yeah.
But then when it melts and freezes, it's allowable.
No, I agree.
And it's worse than some of the other areas where we have like sort of a normal amount of puddling. It kind, it definitely does exceed the.
Yeah.
I will say that I'm not hearing complaints about water going into the basement anymore. So maybe it's some better. I don't know. Maybe it just hasn't gotten bad enough yet that is going to happen. But that happened last year too.
Yep.
And so I'm glad to hear that we're paying attention to that. Then there was another issue that came up about snow and stuff where, where people were complaining about, and I felt sort of personal, about the east side of Main Street. Where you live. And, and so what are we going to do about that?
So it's quite a big project. And we talked about potentially, well, there's a number of options. Going in and repaving sections, which we've done, or mass rebuilding with concrete. I kind of got the impression maybe the board didn't want a full, another full concrete.
We don't have enough budget.
Right. It's something for the future. So I think, did somebody respond to the person?
Yeah.
Oh, he said, we, both of us have responded to.
Yeah, well, we just want to make sure.
It's a mess. It's sad and it's, that's what we're gonna have to live with because you can't.
It can't be, so I just want to make sure it's communicated that the reason it's not being plowed is because the condition of the sidewalk and the telephone poles mean that. And also people's yards have started to.
Slough.
Take slough. So if we do a big sidewalk replacement, we're gonna have to reclaim some space somehow.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough budget thing to sell.
It would be a big project.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd be looking at probably 400,000.
Well, do we have, I just, I know I keep bringing it up, but do we have to have concrete on both slides? Can't we have asphalt on one side?
We can. That'd still be a big project and an expensive project.
Is it, is it about the same cost?
Um, they're like, no, but it's not like half. It's like, we saw the.
But the paving is just one aspect. There's also utility poles that affect the plowability of that.
And it's the steep lawns, of which my house is one of the ones that, that there's not, it's not a flat area that we're dealing with. So it's.
I mean, there is asphalt in the, I mean, there is a fair amount of money in the sidewalk budget. We could look at asphalting, asphalting. Some sections, but where do you stop? You know, I mean, folks.
It's gotta be comprehensive. You do what you can do, right? The West System has a wonderful epoxy, you know, we get, it's, I'm being facetious, but. The folks on the east side of the road, after they changed the road from, to accommodate the horse and buggy, they had sidewalks. And they don't have sidewalks anymore. 51 South Main Street, where I was born, you can't walk on that sidewalk. Ken crosses the street because the sidewalks are so bad. He's gonna say, I'm just delivering packages to you. But no, it's a mess and it's sad. And I've been promoting fixing the sidewalks for, since I found we came out. So, well, we are, right? It's 500,000.
And I think it is, I think that we should have sidewalks on both sides on Main Street. And I also acknowledge that there's some places in town that have zero.
Yeah.
And so it's hard to figure out how to.
Priorities.
How to prioritize, which is part of why we did the sidewalk inventory and we need to keep chipping away at the.
You gotta have sidewalks to be maintained. And that's where, and we're not there.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mary?
Nope, that's all I got.
Got it.
Oh, the bridge on Route 12 just south of the South Village Mobile, where's that?
The bridge.
There's a bridge.
The status.
That goes up to a house.
The one was completed.
Not the one we fixed, but the other one.
The other one.
Yeah, so that one was at a price tag of 200,000.
And we put more away this year for it.
So we're gonna go out to bid. Hopefully, we can get some, to get it repaired. I think we're up to 160,000 in the budget.
So are you thinking this year or the next?
We'll go out to bid and.
What? Last year, you put 160,000.
No, I think we put 100,000.
I'll have to check it.
So what's the plan, Jeff?
So with the approved budget, I think we'll have 160, 170,000. I'm gonna go out to bid.
And whether the bids come back within our budget, we'll make a decision whether we're gonna do it this year or next year.
Yeah. You have to know what was going on.
I understand.
Okay, the question.
No, that's good. That's, yeah, yeah.
And the paving of Lover's Lane, where's that?
So we've spent, Tom and I spent quite a bit of time looking for funds to get the nearly 800,000 that we would need. Unfortunately, we have not been able to locate those funds. We do have that grant for 220,000 for some subbase work and guardrails. We have until December this year to spend those funds. So it's looking like we can find some additional funds. We'll do subbase in the areas where the guardrails need replacing. But the primary thing is to get those guardrails replaced. We're seeing them starting to sink right into the river. Yeah, Tom, Tom and I, seriously, we spent a lot of time and explored. I know Tom was just really, really excited about the potential of getting that done. But it's just, you know, it's tough to find the money.
We don't have a way to detour the extra traffic that road gets?
I voluntarily detoured today.
Well, yeah, you're not the one. I'm meaning like the people that might stop and shop at our businesses on their way to other destinations.
Well, there's been road closures, they don't pay any attention to it, you know? Right, right around it.
They'll go right around.
Yeah.
Those people down south on Route 12A. Those people down south on Route twelve A, they've already had a long drive, they're gonna take the shortest way home.
Yeah.
Which, when it gets paved, the state of Vermont, twenty years ago, said that once that road was up to snuff, we'll take it over for maintenance. So, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-five years ago, yeah, I kept my records. Anything else, Charlie?
No, it's, well, Jeff and I were supposed to talk today about the renovations to be done in this room. And I gave them my list, but we'll
Yeah.
We'll see what's going on.
Yeah, so now we, yeah, well, once this budget's approved, we'll have sufficient funds to start doing a lot of other things.
Will you share those with all of us, John, at some point?
Yes.
Sure.
Mary, did you want to?
Yeah, I had one other thing.
Yes, Mary.
I was very pleased to see that you had written a letter about parking.
Okay.
And have you heard anything else?
Um, I've heard a couple of things related to parking. One business has asked for two designated spots in front of their business, it's a restaurant, so I'm researching that. Other folks have just made general comments about parking on municipal parking lot overnight. So I'm looking into that, I've got a couple of cars that have overstated, overstayed their time, so I'm gonna pull them out if I can connect with those folks, but that's the, those are the two comments that I heard.
You see, you notice any improvement? Are people less likely to park in front of their?
For, for a bit, I did, we did reach out to Norwich and the folks at the nursing school. And we've seen some improvement over there.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That's it. Thank you, John. Barry, you all set?
I'm all set now.
Ready, yeah?
Um, I'm just curious what, how, why the decision was to have the public forum for the dam a good measure?
Yeah, that was, the consultants who had done that, I know I'm kind of new with.
Yeah, I know, we had made the recommendation to do it here and I just, I, I don't know, I always wonder like when something's posted at a business, like do you have to buy something in order to attend it and like it feels weird to go in somewhere and not buy something and.
Yeah, I can change, seriously, I, I felt.
Maybe they have a legitimate reason, but.
I had an uncomfortable feeling and, but I can talk with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I know sometimes the thought is let's get to a place where people are and you're maybe gonna get more people because they're not even there to see you, but, so I understand that, but.
It's not too late, we, we can come talk to them soon.
Okay, and that'll be broadly advertised
Yeah.
on the municipal website, Facebook, et cetera.
I've got it on my calendar, just do that next year, so.
Great. Uh, Charlie, what are snackables at the farmers markets? Is that a thing for sale or a thing?
No, they, it'll, I know it's gonna be popcorn, but I, I don't know if I'm gonna have the time to do biscotti's, we'll see.
Whoa, okay, so these are treats just that are gonna be free treats?
Yeah, donated by the Farm More Farms or Northfield Farmers Market.
Okay, cool.
And then there'll be, there also is gonna be a, some type of questionnaire during voting day. But we'll see, just depends on whether my oven works well enough or not. I know the popcorn machine will.
Uh, and will there be more postings from the town reminding folks about, on Frontboard Forum and Facebook, about town meeting and um, voting day and then, Mary had asked last time we had an election about the banner being out. Is the banner out already? I haven't noticed.
Usually it's the day before.
It's the day of, right, yeah. Okay, and then I also got a question this weekend about childcare being provided, which I know Charlie and Cassie made sure happened one year, right? Was that the year that we had our common future?
I don't think that was town meeting, I think that was for the.
I think you did it for both that year, but yeah, I think you guys were on the, on it because of our common future.
Yeah, I, I've not heard of childcare being provided, I don't.
I don't think it's happening this year, but I, just, it was brought up that it's an accessibility issue for folks with kids. So just something for this board to consider and I don't know how and when, like is that really who decides that and how would we make sure that that happens and.
I don't remember us doing it during town meeting, but I don't remember a lot of things.
I think it was just once, but, and especially because it's an evening now, but anyway, that just came up, so I wanted to just mention it too.
Change everything that's shut it down, it won't be a problem tomorrow.
There's that. Uh, then since John was asking about this room, I wanted to check with Jeff about progress on a mural that we talked about. And there was interest at the school and I connected you with the school, is that happening? And is that everybody on board in the library being included in that conversation?
Yeah, so spoke with Leslie and they wanna do that in the end of June. And I, I said, you know, before you're ready to do that, just let us know. So you think, yeah, I don't know if there was a conversation with the library, but I think she did reach to Sherry.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we should talk to the library about it.
Yeah, I, I know she spoke, I know, I'm quite certain that Leslie did talk with Sherry.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll double check.
And, um, Mary, thanks for bringing up the sidewalk thing, that was on my list too. And the parking thing. The Economic Development Subcommittee discussed briefly parking apps that some towns can use. And we had a parking discussion at our last meeting and I would just like to request that at some future time it, parking in general is on the agenda for the board to discuss. And I think before we start talking about solutions, that we should spend some time investigating the current situation. I know some people feel there's a parking problem, many people say that we do not have a parking problem. If we're seriously concerned about parking or we're wanting to plan for the future, maybe there's grant funds so we can do a parking study. And also the TOD project, hopefully it's been on hold due to concerns about federal funds for the last few weeks, but when that gets going, one of their pieces was really analyzing areas that we could enhance parking for the downtown, so hopefully we can get the most out of that process that would help us. But I just think that we should all talk about it again from time soon. And also it's like the best problem if we have an issue because we have thriving businesses and people coming to our downtown. So I think it's one of those, if it becomes a problem, it's because Northfield's doing well.
All set? How many AEDs does the municipal? And I'm talking about this from personal experience. Is there one here? There is not one in this room.
Is there one in the hallway, John?
So let the manager answer.
Yeah, sorry.
There's two, there's.
Where are they at?
In the municipal building and down at the ambulance.
How much are they?
Six, oh man, I used to. It's been a while, I, I don't wanna, I.
Two thousand dollars?
For some reason sixteen hundred.
Yeah. I'll donate the two thousand dollars, get one in here. I'm serious. Well, we've been talking about it for over a year, Jeff, about AEDs in other municipal buildings.
In this, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'm gonna make a donation, because it saved my life two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll join you with that donation. There you go, I liked it, it saved your life. Yeah, it's very important. I was in three businesses today, they all had AEDs.
Okay.
Yeah. Just a reminder, town meeting next week, Monday and Tuesday, take your pick. And thank you all for filling in for me last meeting. Public participation unscheduled. Anybody online that would like to be recognized? Anyone in the room that would like to be recognized?
The only thing I have to say is I'd like all of you to call your legislators and tell them that you support S sixty-six, which is a bill being put up through legislature to have motorcycles put on jake brake systems and to lower the decibels on motorcycles, have it quieter on the highways. And that, they're having a big meeting on that between the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth of this month. But the more people that call our legislators and let them know that they would like to see it done, it would help.
Can we ever get those signs for the jake brakes?
Um, I told Carl to get them and he's, and I talked, I guess you cannot legally do that, but you can have a warning. So, so we'll get some signs up, saying.
Well, what, what, are we gonna have signs or are we not having signs? And what are the signs gonna say?
When I, it, I'm looking into it, but I'm trying to say no jake brakes, I think we can do that, but it's not enforceable.
I don't think you can get away with no jake brakes, I think you have to say it's a jake brake reduction area.
Yeah.
Or, there's a word in there.
Yeah, yeah, because again, it's, I had them all ready to go, but then I checked and said legally cannot enforce that.
Well, we, we entered this discussion knowing that we could not enforce it unless we had ordinances and all that stuff. The idea was to try the signs first.
So that people would do it as a courtesy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
So the signs help.
Yeah.
Any other? All the participation. Uh, we will be going into executive session on illegal and personnel matter. Move to go into executive session for illegal and personnel matter after a short break. Second, we can say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Standing. We'll be in executive session in five minutes.
Five mic mics. Pick up the chairs. You got the, pick up the chairs.
So who do I do it to for the AEDs?
Contact the manager.
How do I cover it?
Oh, all right.
Well, I'm going to, thank you, all right. I think we should have more.
Yeah. What we should have is, I went, what?
All four, Mary.
Yeah.
All four.
It's really easy, but you know, when your heart is in your throat because something, it's like, how do I do this again?
Yeah.
So you need to have, and nothing like practicing. And you know what they train you on? Staying alive, staying alive, and you're pumping, staying alive.
Jeff, you wanna turn that off? So they crack through your ribs and.
Oh, they did crack your ribs, they, they were working on you.